All right, Evelyn, can we start with the roll call?
Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Trustee Weekly.
Present.
Trustee McAvoy. Vice President Wells.
Here.
President Lawson is absent.
All right. There's no report out on closed session. We're going to continue it after the meeting. No decisions were made. And so we'll move on to the welcome. And I'll start by saying good evening. Welcome to the March 20th, 2024 meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Si la que era interpretación en español por favor llama el nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presiono ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste la reunión persona solicitó un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. Again, welcome. We do encourage the public to participate and provide comments to the board on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda to speak. Please complete a speaker's card online, or if you're here in person, you'll find them available, I think, in the back of the room, and then hand it into Evelyn. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, you'll be called at that time that the item's being considered. And if the issue's not on the agenda, well, you'll be called shortly during the oral communication agenda item. Before we begin our business meeting with the items on the agenda, I'd like for us to take a moment and honor Principal Lupe Torres Khalil, who passionately served at Garfield Community School. You know, our community lost Principal Torres Khalil on Friday, this last Friday, March 14th. She'd been battling illness for some time and passed away peacefully, surrounded by her loved ones. We'll miss her deeply. You know, Lupe devoted her entire career to Redwood City children. She started as a teacher at Taft and was tapped to move to Garfield as assistant principal, and then became the school's principal a decade later in 2020. For close to three decades, she was a guiding light to our students, families, and staff on the Bayside. A caring educator and strong advocate for bilingualism, Lupe touched thousands of lives, challenging her students to become bilingual and bicultural professionals, knowing that a promising future awaited them for their language skills. You know, Lupe leaves a strong legacy in our district and will always honor her memory. Lupe, you know, thank you for serving our students. Dr. Baker?
Yes, we all will deeply miss her. Lupe is survived by her husband, Rami, and also her sister Magda. And there will be a celebration of life on the 6th of April. It will be at Garfield School from 11 o'clock until 1:00. And further information will be coming out within the next few weeks, definitely for the Garfield community and also for Garfield staff, and then for all staff members in the Redwood City School District. So please be on the lookout for that. It will be coming through only Garfield, but through the district office. As trustee Wells said, Lupe was definitely a guiding light on the Bayside. She not only started out as a teacher, Michelle hired her back in the day, and then Michelle also tapped her for being an assistant principal when they were at Taft, and also to continue on at Garfield School. Many families, many staff members, and friends will certainly deeply miss her. I know many of us here in the school district will, as we have worked with her for many, many years, and many of us have become friends with her. With that, I would like us all, please, to take just a moment of silence, and then we'll continue with the board meeting. All right, I think we can move forward with the board meeting. And as I said previously, look for the information coming regarding April 6th. It's a Saturday.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to 6.1. Does anyone have additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
I do have 10.5 and 10.6, if we can pull those and put them under action after 11.1.
Okay, 10.5 and 10.6. All right. I did. I said that we're continuing it afterwards. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So then, hearing no other adjustments, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended to put 10.5 and 10.6 in action?
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, moving on to oral communication, 8.1. As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per person per topic, unless we had more and we needed to adjust it. I don't think we do in this case. Evelyn, I only have one. Is that still the case? Okay, then I believe this is on Zoom. I'd like to call Mr. Robel, Chris Robel.
Good evening, councilors, trustees. I'm calling about urging you to not repeat the millions of dollars of money that has been wasted in the last year on specifically the bond program. So two things. And I sent a note to Janet Lawson and Mike Wells, two emails. So I thought I'd finally come to the board meeting here. So Redwood City School District floated $90 million of Measure S Series A bonds back in June, almost nine months ago, and these bonds were floated at an interest rate of 4.2%. So that's, and nothing has happened with that money, to the best of my knowledge. So that's $3.8 million of interest expense since this money was floated. So to the extent, none of that money's been spent, that's like taking out a car loan and just having it, paying the interest on it for nine months without getting your car. So it's not, there's no benefit to the community, and if you don't need the money yet, you don't start the loan. So that's essentially what's happened there. This is something I've taken up with the Citizens Fund Oversight Community. That's, and I believe there's an IRS violation with that as well. The tax-free status is jeopardized, and I'm looking into that. So all the investors would have to pay tax on it at some point if the money's not spent, and I need to figure out what the duration is. So why that tranche is floated so early, I hope somebody, I hope you will answer that question in this meeting. The second point is that it's also worth noting that, you know, I brought this up before you floated the bonds with your municipal advisor, KNN Finance, who negotiated, conducted a negotiated sale process as opposed to an auction when you floated the bonds at 4.2%. And I subsequently looked at Emma, the database, because I'm a finance person, as you know, the institutional investors who bought those flipped those a couple of weeks later at 3.8%. That's 40 basis points of where the taxpayers are paying too much interest rate, and that's millions of dollars more that where taxpayers are getting harmed by paying too high of an interest rate on the bonds, on this money. So, and unlike what KNN Finance said, and I've talked to partners at several firms, PMCo and other firms, you cannot refinance these bonds for 10 years under almost any circumstances because of the Trump tax law in 2017. So you cannot take advantage of lower interest rates unless it really collapses significantly before the 10-year call period. So we're locked into this artificially high interest rate. Apparently Sequoia got it below 4%, but we're paying 4.2. So my request to you going forward is that you do, first of all, don't float money before you need it, and you're going to spend it on something. And number two is do an auction process, not a negotiated sale, just like you wouldn't put something on eBay that's not an auction. You're not going to get as good a price. Thank you. Please think of the taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris.
And hopefully there's an.
Okay, and then moving on with our agenda, we're on to school and community reports, and we're starting with 9.1, the Expanded Learning Program Board Report.
Yes, and we have Ms. Michelle Griffith along with her team to come up and give an update on the community schools report. Along with that is the Expanded Learning Opportunity Programs and Next Steps. So Michelle, I will turn this over to you. Don't forget to hit the button, the one on the right. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Baker and Board of Trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you our annual Community School Board Report this evening. I am extremely fortunate to be able to collaborate with such a talented and dedicated team of individuals, some of whom are with us this evening. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you our team of presenters. First, we have, I don't know what side they're all, oh, there you are. First, we have Liz Calderon Garcia, our district community school coordinator. Enrique Calderon, our district communities, our expanded learning coordinator. Jackie Campos, MIT's community school coordinator. Cynthia Cardona, Kennedy's community school coordinator. Albert Lowe, Clifford's community school coordinator. Gilberto Guzman, our expanded learning equity staff developer. I want to acknowledge a member of our team that could not be with us this evening, but supported the creation of this presentation and is working on the data pieces for community schools and expanded learning. Elsa Iceboro, our HIP and Community School Data Coordinator. Elsa's on maternity leave. She gave birth to a baby girl about a week ago. So before we actually move into our presentation, our team would like to honor someone that is with us this evening. It is Afelda Aguilera, our community school administrative assistant. We want to honor her for her hard work, her dedication, her leadership, and also for adapting to our growing program. We just really want to thank you, Afelda. Okay, now I hit this one, right? Okay. Did I do it? Oh, you're gonna do it? Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have a few items on our agenda that we will be presenting this evening. First, we will share some community school updates that we presented as next steps at our 2324 community school presentation. Then will we report on the work we have completed to date and our next steps regarding our community school theory of action? Next, as you know, we are the recipients of the CCSPP California Community School Partnership Grant. This is our first year of implementation of this five-year grant. So we will be sharing our accomplishments so far and our future work. And last, but of course not least, we will reporting out on our ELOP Expanded Learning Program. Thank you. So we want to update the board on the next steps we shared with you in 2023. First, we did open a new community school at Clifford. Albert Lowe, Clifford's coordinator, has done a tremendous job rolling out the community school framework. Redwood City School District now implements the community school model at eight of our 12 school sites. Another next step we have taken up is the formation of a data subcommittee. We understand the importance and the need to measure our program impact. So this subcommittee has been meeting for several months now with the goal of having our data collection tools completed by June and ready for implementation in the 2425 school year. Part of our work around our data tools is that we are, we are working to align them with our theory of action, with our LCAP goals, and with our SIPSS. We are continuing our journey to adopt a data management system that will allow us to better track the work we are doing. We have been meeting with the district team, including Ms. Herrera and Antonio Perez, to explore Power Schools' capability to meet our needs. Next, our community school coordinator team has been working with Kristin Geiser and Liz Newman from Stanford's John Gardner Center to develop our community schools' theory of action that will guide our work both at a district level and at our site level. We are really excited tonight to share with you our Expanded Day Learning Program as it continues to grow and that we have brought in our own professional development program, which is under the leadership of Gilberto Guzman. Along with our professional development program, we are also in the development phase of creating our own in-house evaluation tool and data sources through the guidance of Elsa Iceboro. You will hear more about that later on in our presentation. As mentioned before, we are in our first year of implementation of the CCSPP grant at four sites, Hoover, Garfield, MIT, and Taft. And finally, I really want to highlight the important collaboration work with community schools, with our Expanded Learning Program, that has taken place between the following district departments: community schools, student services, maintenance, HR, and communication. This cross-collaboration has produced stronger alignment, improved systems and services to better support our students, our families, our partners, and our sites. So the data that you see here reflects one trimester of work that occurred between August and December. We want to give you a glimpse into the important and complex work that happens at our community schools. We work to connect our students and families with supports, resources, and services. These supports, resources, and services remove barriers for our students so that they can better focus on the learning. We collect this data each trimester, and our community school coordinators use their site-level data to reflect with their teams to identify community trends and gaps that may exist so that they can determine what is needed for their communities. Then at the end of the year, we gather teams from each site for our data-based inquiry days that occur in June so that we can analyze our data as a team. We celebrate our successes, and we determine next steps. So we're, my team's behind me. There they are. We will now present our theory of action work. To create our theory of action, we came together as a collective and built common understandings and common language around what it means to be a community school. But we also brought in the voices of our community stakeholders so that the uniqueness of each site is reflected in this theory of action. I will now pass over the mic to Albert.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, members of the board. Good evening. My name's Albert Lowe. I'm the community school coordinator at Clifford. And I'm going to be speaking to you about the theory of action, what it is, why we decided to develop one, and what the process has been like. So if you can go to the next slide, please. So when we think of a theory of action, we go to the research, and researchers Andres and Nordingren say that a theory of action describes how an organization works to create the outcomes it wants. So the way that we think about it is like a playbook or like a guidebook. So like any guidebook, it's going to tell us how we're going to get from the point in which we're currently at to a point in which we could truly say that all families in Redwood City are able to have all the resources needed for their children to truly flourish, especially those that are most marginalized. So just like any guidebook, there are clear directions. They tell us how to get there, as well as signposts on the way. So the signposts would be like benchmarks that let us know at certain points in the year where we should be at, and whether or not it makes sense to change direction in order to continue to steer towards student success and families flourishing. And then we are overall guided by an orientation or a vision, a vision for the district of all families being able to flourish because they have all of the resources that they need for their children to truly thrive. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So let's talk a little bit about why we decided to develop the theory of action. We're fortunate enough to be in a district that has been at the cutting edge of community school work for the last 25 years. We really thank you for prioritizing community schools, and our families, thank you, because of the impact. We are welcoming new community school coordinators to the team. I'm new. There's a few other new folks. And just like whenever you welcome new people to a team, it's really important that you have a very clear vision for what the scope of the work is going to be and what the mission of the organization is. So that's another reason why we decided to develop a theory of action. They're also, as you are well aware of, renewed statewide focus on community schools. I was in the car the other day. I even heard Gavin Newsom on the radio talking about community schools and how many schools are getting converted into that. So we're very proud to be on the cutting edge of that. And in order to stay on the cutting edge, it's important that we do have that clear vision. And then there has been an expansion of community schools within Redwood City School District, which means that it's incredibly important that we align on our vision, as well as practices and the scope of work. So what I mean by that is that we're fortunate enough within our school buildings that we're able to offer our families many incredible services, like free food for those in need, free clothing for those in need, referrals to mental health counseling. We also engage in equity work. And there are still going to be many times in which the family's need falls outside of the scope of what can be provided in a school building. So what we're aiming to do is codify when it makes sense to refer families to an outside agency. We're lucky enough to live in a state that has many outside agencies that support families. So it's really important to make sure that that scope of work is incredibly well codified. Also, transitioning back from COVID-19 has been hard. We're still feeling the effects. Our families are still feeling the effects, whether that is health-wise, financially, emotionally. So we really want to be there to support all of our families through that process, and that's part of why developing a clear theory of action is incredibly important. If we go to the next slide, please. So because it's so important, we have a process that we've been following. Last summer, in the summer of 2023, we engaged in several conversations with the John W. Gardner Center from Stanford University to set the groundwork for developing a theory of action. And one of the things that we determined was that it's incredibly important to have key stakeholders input in it because it's what's affecting their day-to-day. So because of that, in fall of 2023, we conducted landscape interviews, which included community school coordinators, the director of community schools, Michelle, administrators, so assistant principals, principals, as well as other stakeholders. And then moving into winter, we continue to gather stakeholder feedback, including board members, and we're using that to determine goals, metrics, and also the data processes. And we are continuing those landscape interviews. So we are also continuing to meet as a community school coordinator team, guided by the John W. Gardner Center, to flesh out the theory of action. And we actually were able to come up with some pretty interesting findings along the way. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Cynthia Cardona, who's going to just speak about some of the value that we got in the process.
Thank you, Albert. Good evening. Like always, it's great to see all of you. Okay, so theory of action. You guys got it? Ready to put into practice? Yeah? Well, we're not. And not because we're not ready, but because we're still in the process of developing our theory of action. Yeah, we can go to the next one. Thank you. And in order to explain this, the value and the process and this process that we're going through, honestly, the best thing that I can do is talk to you about sports. All right, so there's this team, the Golden State Warriors. Yes? Yeah? Okay, I'm not just mentioning them because we had Mr. Jane. I had the assistant coach at our career day. No, it's because in 2009, they went through a similar process that we're in right now. 2009, they decided as an organization that they were going to go through some changes, and those changes led to so much. The, they decided that they needed to align their vision. And up until that point, they were a pretty average team. They had some great games. Some years, they went further than others, and they had a solid fan base, but really, it was people just from the Bay Area. Nothing really made them stand out. Well, since going through that process of change, they've achieved many great things. In 2010, they debuted their new logo depicting a bridge that represented the Golden Gate Bridge and the Bay Area that they play for. Then later, they relocated their arena from Oakland to San Francisco and opened the beautiful Chase Center, which created an atmosphere of belonging and excitement for their fan base. And their change of staff, coaches, and players has led them to be the amazing team we love today. Since this process began, players like Steph Curry, Kevin Durant, Klay Thompson have individually achieved great things, like breaking records and signing with big sponsors that include Nike and Under Armour. But above all, since this process began, this team has won four amazing championships. And so bringing it back to our process, as Albert mentioned, we have met as a team, and we've shared our individual visions, strengths, and areas of improvement. We've gathered voices and perspectives from our stakeholders, and we've not just copied what other districts have implemented, but have taken, and we haven't taken on someone else's vision, but we're coming together as a diverse team to passionately collaborate in the development of our theory of action. In just a second, you'll hear more about how we've engaged our community in this process. But I want to talk about my favorite part so far, which has been the expansion of the concept of the community school approach. You see, for many years, community schools were considered to just be a school that had a family center where families would come in and they had someone there that spoke Spanish, or the community school coordinators met with our international families and gave them a free backpack. But we have now, as we've continued to grow and learn as a team, and as we've been given more opportunities, like tonight, to share the depth of our work, we're coming together as a team, and now we're hungry for a championship. But those four championships won by the Golden State Warriors were not just won by their starting lineup, who, yes, they worked hard and trained even harder, but there were many people behind the scenes that were working and actively laboring for those titles. So we can go to the next slide, please. Just like them, we've had people working behind the scenes to develop our theory of action. Some of, some of those people you see here tonight, and others were not able to make it. But we have together given out surveys at our individual campuses. We've gathered student and parent voices. We have presented at our staff meetings, gained input from our partnerships, from our counselors, our extended-day learning programs, our communities, and even from some of you. So are you ready for a championship? But before we get there, just know this, that this won't come from just us as community school coordinators meeting with parents and sharing about a new resource or interviewing them to see what else we need at our school. It's much, it's much more than that. It's making sure that everyone knows and believes in the game plan. It involves me, and it involves you. It's assuring that every member of the organization and our community knows the role that they have in this game. And so to explain the Xs and Os of this game plan, please welcome Michelle Griffith. Take it away, coach.
So here you have our theory of action draft. It will actually always be a draft because it's always going to be a document that we're going to gather voices and perspectives, and we will keep working on our draft, but we're actually debuting this with all of you. And I want to start with the top of the page. We have our problem and opportunity statement. This statement will drive our work, and it is aligned to our district's focus on equity and the backbone of our community school work. If you'll indulge me for a moment, I will read it. "Our educational system does not systematically promote equitable opportunities and outcomes. By centering the cultural strengths of our students and their families and collaborating with families and community partners to provide culturally responsive curriculum, instruction, materials, and supports, community schools are uniquely positioned to interrupt and transform systemic educational inequities and ensure that all students, especially those historically and persistently marginalized, develop the knowledge and skills that will support them in attaining equitable outcomes." The green section that you see here represents our community school pillars. As we know, each site may vary in the design of their programs and the activities they embrace, but all our community schools... but all our community schools employ strategies that fall under these pillars. The blue section highlights the outcomes for our district, our schools, our students, and our families that we will be working towards and measuring in our data work. And the purple section, these are our long-term goals that we work towards for the future of our students, families, and communities. And finally, the gray area at the bottom. Kind of looks gray, but anyways. Bottom of the page outlines the conditions that need to be in place in order to translate this theory into practice, such as including district leaders, consistent support of the district leaders, consistent support of the community school model, centering community schools in Redwood City School District's mission, vision, strategic plans, goals, and investment of resources, including funding, staffing, and community partners. So at the top of this page was an actual visual that we created. It's, it's kind of our journey through all of our meetings that brought us from the very beginning stages of gathering perspectives to the end where we created our, our theory of action. And as a team, we will be aligning district community school outcomes and goals. And then each site will be doing the same based on their community strengths and needs. As mentioned earlier, we will also be developing data sources to measure the impact of our work, both at a district level and at site levels. And finally, based on lessons learned in data analysis, we will continue to develop our program to meet the needs of our communities.
And we just, yeah, the next slide. We just want to end this time by thanking Kristen Geiser and Liz Newman, who really have spent so much time guiding and leading us, being our cheerleaders and supporting us through this process. So, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. You can go to the next slide. So now I would like to bring up Liz Calderon and Jackie Campos to present our CCSPP program. And I'd like to read a quote. "CCSPP is aimed at transforming schools into community hubs that integrate academic, academic, health, and social services through community partnerships to ensure student success and well-being."
Thank you, Michelle. Good afternoon. My name is Liz Calderon Garcia, and I'm the district community school coordinator. It's nice to be here again. As you may recall, last year at the board's presentation, we announced that we had been awarded the CCSPP grant. As part of the grant, we as a district created goals that are driving our work. So the goals at the district level are to increase parent engagement, reduce chronic absenteeism, enhance social emotional learning, improve our collaborative leadership structures. In addition, sites used available data such as the Panoramic Survey results to create site-specific goals to determine how they would be spending their grant funds in order to address the needs of their communities. Garfield identified the need for more mental health services. They decided to allocate some of their grant funding to hire a mental health counselor that would not only provide counseling to students, but also to families. In addition to enhancing the mental health services, they are also focused on student engagement and social emotional wellness. They work MIT and Taft. Both allocated grant fundings to hire community school specialists. Their focus is to work with families whose students have a high number of absences, which is affecting their academics. They work with families to reengage them and assist them with connecting them to services when necessary. Ultimately, their goal is to improve attendance and reduce chronic absenteeism, increase student and family engagement, while offering academic support to students on their caseloads. Hoover allocated grant funding to hire a dean of students whose focus is to increase student engagement, improve attendance, reduce chronic absenteeism, and increase students' sense of belonging. In addition to those areas of focus, he also holds restorative circles and is working with the admin team to bring restorative practices to the site. With this grant, we are working towards updating our approach to supporting our most marginalized communities by grounding our community schools' vision and framework in the four research pillars of community schools. Next slide. At the district level, grant funding was allocated for my district community school coordinator position. My role is to support the implementation of the grant by creating tools such as a handbook for each site, including a scope and sequence for the year, and to work alongside the community school coordinators at the sites to lead the work. As part of my role, I am also working collaboratively with the community school coordinator and the staff members hired through the grant to align our processes with our current systems in place at the different sites, such as the referral process and the attendance protocols. We also hired an R C S D consultant, who is working with me to create the infrastructure using the Thrive Framework, which we heard about, we spoke about it a couple of weeks ago, for our case managers so that they can assist families experiencing housing instability or homelessness. As mentioned in the previous slide, we have hired specific positions at the school sites. And what I want to highlight is the intentional collaboration that is happening at the sites. For example, the community school specialist and the dean of students are working closely with their MTSS cytosis as they work towards reducing absenteeism. The goal is to work collaboratively and not in silos so that we are not duplicating efforts, but rather specifically focusing on what needs to be done. In addition to the site's positions, we are looking to hire two case managers to work with our four schools, Taft, Hoover, MIT, and Garfield. The case managers will work one-on-one with families experiencing housing instability or homelessness. There are many moving pieces to this grant, and in addition to my support, we have brought in others to help our team. Listed here are our supports. We have H T A, who is a grant writing consulting firm that we have contracted with. They have created a program evaluation plan, data collection timeline, focus group protocols, and survey tools. They will also support us in completing our annual progress report, which is called an APR, at the end of June. And then we have also been working with Marcella, who's here in the audience, from the San Mateo County Office of Education. She has gone above and beyond to support, to support us with the implementation of this grant with sustainability, sustainability planning, capacity building, and bridging between district, state, and local teams. To support community school coordinators at the site leads for this, as the site leads for this work, we contracted with Alejandro Vilches from Vilches Consulting to help our coordinators with preparation, facilitation, and meeting structures. He is helping to facilitate the data conversations during the advisory council meetings so that our coordinators can be active participants in those conversations. In my next slide, I will go more in-depth about the advisory councils and what they are. Last but not least, we contracted Greg Peters from S F S to lead facilitator team trainings with our advisory councils. Our advisory councils are composed with different stakeholders within our community, such as our community school coordinator, who's the lead and facilitator of that group, students, parents, staff, community partners, and the school admin. Greg worked with our teams to create a balance of power due to members' different positions and roles. We are intentional about disrupting the traditional power dynamics that assist based on the positions individuals hold and giving more equity of voice to our parents, students, and teachers. Next slide. Now let me walk you through our timeline. We begin our journey by creating advisory council teams at each site. As I mentioned in my previous slide, our advisory councils are composed of different stakeholders at our sites. The advisory councils aim to capture community member, partner voices by having representations from the different groups. When making decisions, all of these different stakeholders are included. The advisory councils analyze data, create plans based on the results from the asset and needs assessment, and then they assess the implementation of the plan, and then they participate in ongoing reflection. Once our advisory councils have been formed, we started the training that S F S facilitated to develop meeting protocols, roles, and norms. As we completed the last training, we started to work on the asset and needs assessment. Our asset and needs assessment was conducted through focus groups and a survey. Student feedback was gathered via an in-person focus group conducted by our district team. Forty students across our four sites participated in these focus groups, and they were in English and in Spanish. Parent feedback was gathered via in-person focus groups, and because we did not have the turnout we hoped for, we also gathered parent voices through an online survey. We had 243 families that completed the survey and 11 that participated in our focus groups. Staff feedback was gathered via an online focus group. We had 17 staff members participate. The focus groups were held right before winter break for staff, which we know is not ideal, especially too close to that break. Our site advisory council teams are currently looking at their site data, which they will use to create site goals based on that data. Once goals are created, they will create an implementation plan. The hope is that the implementation plan of the goal starts in the fall of 2024. As sites implement their plans to reach their goals, they will continue to go through cycles of inquiry focused on continuous improvements by looking at data and progress monitoring. We know that the needs of our communities can shift and change, which is why we are embedding the cycle of inquiry into the fabric of our work. Now I will pass it on to Jackie, who will share her experience as the lead at the MIT Advisory Council.
Thank you, Liz, and good evening, board. My name is Jackie Campos, and I'm the community school coordinator at MIT. As an active participant of MIT's advisory council, I've had the privilege to witness the transformative potential of the advisory council. Throughout the last few months, our council has dedicated a significant amount of time to fostering a sense of community, ensuring that all members feel safe to speak their truth. Together, we've delved into the needs assessment data, engaging in rich dialogue about its implications and how to best address the identified needs as a unified school community. I want to take a moment to highlight the significant contributions of our students who have emerged as brave leaders, courageously sharing their experiences and perspectives. Their insights have been invaluable in shaping our understanding and guiding our actions toward creating a more inclusive and supportive school environment. Additionally, I must acknowledge the dedication of our parents. Despite their busy work schedules and family commitments, they have consistently shown up eager to contribute and advocate for the well-being of all students. Their commitment is a testament to the strength of our community and the shared vision we hold for the future. Serving alongside our dedicated parents, students, teachers, and administrators on the advisory council fills me with pride and joy. I firmly believe that our collective efforts will lead to positive changes in the years to come. I encourage each of you to take a moment to read the testimonials on the slide. These narratives showcase the remarkable experiences and outcomes witnessed across all four sites. Additionally, I invite you to explore further testimonials by clicking on the link provided on the slide. These accounts collectively emphasize the effectiveness and the value of advisory councils. Next slide, please. I would now like to share the insights that we've gathered from our focus groups and surveys, integral components to the needs assessment conducted under the CCSPP grant. While our efforts have been successful in amplifying the voices of students and parents, we recognize the need for further engagement with our staff. Nonetheless, the data collected thus far has unveiled invaluable insights into the unique needs and aspirations of each school community. I'm going to highlight some of the trends listed on the slide for each stakeholder group. These trends provide a glimpse into the perspectives shared by our students, parents, and staff, shedding light on their respective needs and aspirations. So as you can see on the slide, in the focus groups we conducted with our students, we found that generally, students across four sites feel supported and heard by staff, and they enjoy their expanded learning programs. We did find that there's a need for an increase in academic and extracurricular options and supports, as well as better food options. In our family survey and focus groups, we found that families across all four sites have a general positive perception of parent and student supports. They also have a positive perception of the expanded learning problems, programs, apologies. One thing that we did find is that most families did what would like to see an increase in mental health services, as well as an increase in staff visibility and an increase in expanded learning opportunities and academic supports. Moving on to our staff survey, we found that across four sites, there's a general appreciation for the work of the family centers. Additionally, there's a high level of awareness of the community school supports among school staff. However, there we did find that there's a need to increase parent voice and a need for more opportunities for school day and expanded learning staff to communicate. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll find some quotes that were extracted from our focus groups and surveys conducted across the four sites. These quotes summarize the sentiments expressed by our stakeholders and serve as a testament to the significance of the community schools in addressing the diverse needs of our students and families. Now I'd like to pass it back to Liz to discuss the next steps of the grant. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Jackie. For our next steps, we'll be co-facilitating with Marcella an R C S D C C S P budget workshop tomorrow night. For our four sites, with our community school coordinators, our school site admin, the purpose is to align school expenditure plans with the CCSP goals, the SIPSS, and the LCAP to facilitate transformational change and improve student outcomes. Sites will also begin creating their site-specific goals and plans based on their data from the assets and needs assessment. We hope to soon be hiring two case managers who will work with our four sites using the Thrive Model to assist families experiencing housing instability and homelessness. We will also start working on our APR, our annual progress report, which is due to this date in June, and it includes an evaluation and narrative that will be submitted. Next slide. I want to publicly thank Marcella Miranda, Marco Chavez, the H T A staff, Alejandro Vilches, and Greg Peters, who have been instrumental in our success. I will now pass it on to Enrique Calderon.
Good evening. My name is Enrique Calderon, and I'm the coordinator of Expanded Learning here at the Redwood City School District. And I'm going to be sharing a little, a few updates about our Expanded Learning programs from last year into this year. Before I jump into them, I wanted to share a quote with you from one of our parents. They said, "We love the after-school program. They are kind and provide us peace of mind. Our child is safe and learning while we complete our workday. It really feels like a partnership." So here we have an overview of the four phases that Redwood City School District has gone through with the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, dating back to our first phase, which was school year 2122, which is when we first received E L O P funding and the development of the E L O P plan was created. Phase two was last school year, which was the implementation, our first year of implementation of our E L O P plan, as well as the expansion of enrollment and district partners for Extended Learning. This school year, phase three, we are in the development of alignment with the school day and the beginning phases of data collection. And looking into next year, phase four will be the expansion of data collection and processes. Now, a quick recap of last year to this year. We have grown tremendously from 1,600 students in Extended Learning Programs to now closing in on 2,600 students in Extended Learning Programs and across 11 school sites and three off-site community centers. Some of the programs that we have incorporated in all of our Extended Learning Sites are music, Brazilian drumming, coding, fitness and wellness, steam, martial arts, hip-hop dance, roller skating, as well as tutoring. Additionally, we've also increased our services in our Extended Learning Sites with services such as transportation, Wi-Fi connectivity for our Extended Learning Partners, S E L curriculum, S E L mentor groups, and mental health therapists. And now I will turn it over to my teammate Gil Guzman to speak about our efforts around professional development with our Extended Learning Partners.
Evening, everybody. My name is Gilberto Guzman. I am, I help out with professional development and the Expanded Learning Programs. During phase two, the Expanded Learning Team noticed a need for professional development in many of our programs and decided to create a system of support. So before the 2023-24 school year, we started working on a plan that would align with the school day and also support the after-school programs. To do so, the Expanded Learning Team surveyed our partners for needs. And with this information, we created a scope and sequence based on the partner needs as topics. Once we had those topics, the team developed- Once we had those topics, the team developed a professional, professional development sessions from a combination of research, SFS, NUAA, DataWorks, and PBIS strategies, as well as strategies we found effective as classroom teachers and school leaders. So aside from our professional development sessions, we offer site support. We do this to aid the implementation of the strategies Expanded Learning, the Expanded Learning Team presented. At sites, we offer bi-weekly model lessons. We co-plan and co-teach lessons. We do observations and give feedback. We also created an online resource folder that is available to every site. Now let's take a look closer at our scope and sequence for the year. We took the topics that we gathered from our surveys, and we made them into goals. Here, the green middle part, goals broken down for every trimester. And underneath, you see the how. That's what our PD focuses on. Our goal for trimester one, primarily in the beginning, would be motion on physical safety and efficiency, because we have a limited time and we want to maximize learning. How would we do that? We explicitly taught, modeled, and practiced rules, redirections, and routines. We also know that every student deserves a welcoming environment. So to achieve this, we planned out intentional and consistent community building. Building on trimester one, our goal for trimester two was creating a sense of belonging. And we did this through ritualized openings, grounding our students in their space and in their learning. Student voice was also something that wanted to be increased by the programs. So we presented participation strategies that focused on equity of voice for students. And our last topic of trimester two was student empowerment. We introduced student feedback forms, so students would have agency in their learning. And for trimester three, we're going to focus on increasing self-esteem through cultural connection, conflict resolution, and healing. And we will address this with structured community circles in order to have authentic conversations and spaces of healing. And we're going to offer individualized supports for students who need this. My partner Enrique had this great idea of having an LPAC initiative with our after-school programs. And together with Casa Circulo, we are focusing on increasing student language development. I really want to give a big thanks to Mariela Taladera and Laura Pulido, who are district language development specialists, because they really helped me understand the LPAC, student data, and resources. And with this, we were able to work with Casa Circulo and really unpack the LPAC, looking at the four domains and looking at the individual Kinder, first, second, three, five, six, eight tests, and then looking at the weighted scores for each domain per grade level cluster. We also looked at student data, and that student data, we identified students who will take the LPAC in twenty twenty-four that assist Casa Circulo. And we identified each student's present level. And then now, having this information, this data, we started our implementation phase. We're focusing on reading and main idea, questions matching the LPAC stems. We also created this plan using Redwood City School District, Bakersfield School District, CASP and Elevation Resources Mariela and Laura provided us with. Now I'm going to pass it on to Enrique, who's going to tell you more about evaluation and data collection process.
All right. Thank you, Gil. It's really amazing having Gil on the team. He does a lot with the Extended Learning Partners at each site, so I do want to give him a big shout out for all the work he's done this year. So along with the great work that Gil is doing with our Extended Learning Partners, we knew that data collection and revamping our program evaluation tool were essential to maintaining high-quality programs. And this is the work that Elsa Icepudo is really leading in collaboration with our team. And so in order to revamp our evaluation tool, we've gone through three different phases in collaboration with our team, as well as our Extended Learning Partners. So in our first phase, we conducted landscape interviews. So here, we met with every program to conduct a questionnaire focusing on three different areas, which were youth, programs, and systems. The questions primarily centered on how does the program centralize and integrate student, family, and caregiver voices? How does the program develop, design, and create goals or monitor program quality? And how does the program align and collaborate across schools and the district? And here we looked for trends, gaps, areas of growth, as well as potential supports the district may be able to provide. Next, we moved into phase two, which was our PQA process review, which PQA is our program quality assessment that we run with programs every year. Here, we broke down the PQA process into three parts. Our pre-PQA meeting, where we met with each Extended Learning Partner, and we reviewed focal areas for our observations, as well as aligning our scoring rubric. Second was our in-person PQA observation. So our team divided up and conquered, going to each school site and each community center to observe for a day. Here, our team observed programs at every site, and then we debriefed with them. Our, and then third was our PQA goal-setting meetings. So here, programs develop goals or are meeting with our team to review their goals, action steps, and indicators of progress and how it ties to their overarching goals. Now, we're in phase three, which is where we are in our evaluation tool and data collection. So currently, we're reflecting the role of Redwood City School District in the PQA process and also finalizing our district evaluation tool. So in doing this, we use the quality standards from the CDE, as well as the PQA tool from the California After-School Network and the data that we received from the pre-PQA meetings from our partners. So here is to develop an evaluation tool, breaking it down into a few sections, which are alignment and observation. The first alignment, meaning that our, the standard practices are reflective of our MOU. And observation, so program, staff, students outlining and specifying what we're looking for in a high-quality program. Next slide, please. Additionally, we are looking to collect the following data from partners, such as attendance, mid-year data around enrollment and program movement. We do have a few programs at certain sites. There's multiple programs on site, so sometimes students will move from one program to another, so that's what we meant by that. Annual goals and progress monitoring, survey results, end-of-year data, again, around enrollment, program movement, and goal progress, as well as our own data around school attendance and academics. So we will use this data to report back to the state for, and our other grants, also run internal districts reports to see if there is an impact with students in Extended Learning and if there's an impact around attendance and academics, analyze and reflect areas of support, as well as evaluate program quality and monitor. Next slide. So furthermore, looking into phase four, here are our goals for next school year. So we are going to continue building professional development, focus on expanding our LPAC support, not just with Casa Circulo, but across all of our Extended Learning Program sites, and also pilot a eighth-grade high school transition support program or initiative, the expansion of data collection, implementation of our district, our new revamped district evaluation tool, as well as finalizing an expanded learning mission and vision, as well as finalizing our district Extended Learning Handbook. So part of reaching our bigger long-term goals is also having our program partners implement incremental small cycle changes that will be based on the data that we collect. So they will be running these internally throughout the year. And then our team will support and collaborate wherever, wherever is needed. So I want to take a moment to give a big thank you to Ruby and Marco from the County Office of Ed. They've been working and supporting with us a lot, or supporting us a lot. Also, our amazing community school coordinators, our school site admin, and all of our Extended Learning Partners that are listed here. Now I will turn the time back over to Michelle.
We're just about done. So as always, we have next steps. One of our, we are looking at sustainability. We know that we have grown a lot in the last few years and that we are working towards creating and embedding systems and protocols that will provide alignment in the work both at the district level and with our sites. We are continuing to look for, to do grant exploration to provide opportunities for growth and expansion. And as Liz mentioned, our CCSPP First Annual Progress Report is due in June. We will be collaborating with HTA to complete that report. Our ACES, After-School Education and Safety Program Plan and Application, need to be written and are due to the state in the fall of two thousand twenty-five. Our heavy lift is really going to be around in the year twenty, in next year, twenty-four, twenty-five, as we roll out our theory of action by sharing our vision and making meaning together. There's eight sites. We have a lot of meaning to make together, a lot of people to bring to the table around the document, creating district and site goals and activities, and really begin the implementation of our theory of action. And then we are finally, as mentioned earlier, will also be rolling out our new data collection tools for both the community schoolwork and our Extended Learning Programs. We were probably going to reach out to all of you to give us some input into what you are also looking for in the area of data, so we'll be contacting you soon. So we just want to say thank you. We know it's a lot to sit through a presentation that's this long. We really appreciate your time. It's late, but we want to open up for questions.
And we thank you, Michelle, for taking the time to actually put together such a long presentation in the community school. Yeah, you know, and I want to say thank you, Cynthia and Albert, for presenting on the Theory of Action work that's been going on. Liz and Jackie on the community school, the CCSP and the work that's going on there. Enrique and Hilberto on the Expanded Learning. And of course, I will have to say congratulations to Elsa, who's not here tonight. So at this point, was that? Oh, okay, great. I'm glad you're online. Yeah.
Yay, Elsa!
At this point, I will turn to the other trustees and see if anyone wants to volunteer to go first. I'm happy to call on if no one wants to with comments or questions.
Sure, I'll go first.
Right, good job.
Again, thank you so much to all of you. As I'm observing you guys speaking and the collaboration that you guys have is just awesome and the energy in the room. I'm assuming that when you're in the after-school programs, serving the kids and the parents, you know, it's another level. And of course, I was trying to write down when one of the slides, a parent that said she appreciates that we take her students' opinion and they're able to get the information of everything that is happening. I forget what Elsa actually said, because it was too quick. But I just want to say thank you. I mean, obviously, you guys have come a long way, right? I mean, it's more and more and more and more schools are becoming community schools. And of course, with people like you, again, as a parent, you want to be able to be there and have that experience, the feeling safe, feeling welcome. I do really like what you guys are doing with the LPAC group, because we do know those are the kids that need the most help. And so I think it's nice for the parents to actually feel it's not just at school, but after school, the extra help that they get, like somebody mentioned, you know, they're busy and they're trusting their students with, you know, our staff. So I do want to say thank you. There was definitely a lot, and I do appreciate all the goals that you guys are setting. I'm sure you guys will meet it. I just, I just think Redwood City is amazing. I actually was just thinking as you guys were talking, I'm like, I work for another district and I don't really do that. So I mean, I don't mean in a bad way, but Redwood City does wear lots of hats. I've said it before and I will say it again. So hats off to all of you. I know with the whole data piece, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know one of my trustee board members would love to speak to you about data. So that is his favorite.
We know.
So I do think that it's important for the kids to again feel safe, not just, obviously, we're helping them with the academics, but with all the other extracurricular activities. And then I'm wondering, at one point, obviously, we're talking data, but are we, I mean, I don't want to say like tracking, but are we going to see where those kids are being served by the after-school program or the community schools? How their academics have actually shifted, or are you guys keeping data separate?
We aren't keeping any data separate. We're working on it. It's a, that direct thread, we haven't figured out how to do that yet, but we're working on. We're going to count on our community school specialists right now to connect their work with students and to academics and to the attendance. But we also want to find a way how we can link directly to attendance and academics in all these other pieces we have together. You have the answer?
No, I'm just enthusiastic.
It's a big lift, and we know that, and we're working hard, and we've been working with the Gardener Center, and we are, we have a subcommittee that we're trying to unpack all that. So that's, and we also want to hear from you as to what you would like to see. So it's, it might, we're planning to roll something out, like I said, in twenty-four, twenty-five. I don't know if we'll have all the pieces together, but something more connected. And that's really part of what our work is with, with our Extended Learning as well. We want to keep that school day going. And so we are making some bridges there.
Definitely. Thank you. Again, I love the collaboration, because you guys are not just one school site, right? You guys are many, and you guys are actually putting your thinking hats and sharing the information. So it's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-oh.
It's, it's, it's just, it's a riot. I love that my, my questions have become predictable, have become predictable enough to become a punchline.
No.
But some of that's desired. So I think the part that I love here is just even the focus on a theory of action. What are we doing here? What are we hope to accomplish? And why do we think it's credible that we'll be able to achieve those goals? Going all the way back to what does the community want? What do the teachers want? Like, and just really being plugged in there. And then holding yourself accountable, is it working or not? Some parts are going to work, some parts aren't going to work. How do we turn this into a learning loop? We're never going to be done. Like, God, this is my love language, right? And so like, I think those parts are absolutely fantastic. But then to be missing the data is the punchline is like, it's hard. It's like getting a tour of the bakery and reading through the recipes for delicious cakes and hearing all the processes that the bakers are going to use to produce delicious cakes and not actually getting to eat the cake. Is the cake good, right? And I would love to know, like, is this working? What parts are working? What parts aren't working? Where we've already measured some of these things to see like, what's, what, what individual programs are doing great, and we're going to double down on them? Where did we try something that sounded like a good idea? Turned out it didn't work at all. Like, wow, learned a lot from that. I would love some of, some of those stories to see that learning process that's being described on the slides in action to make it real. That would be, that'd be wonderful. I mean, where I love community schools is just like, the evidence is really strong that community schools in a district see increasing attendance among the affected populations. They see increased school engagement, higher educational attainment, graduation rates, college acceptance rates, all the way through. I started out a skeptic of community schools, and it was, it was the data that I saw in the studies that showed me that they were effective. So I'm so glad that we're doing this work, and I can't wait to receive the punchline about how we're, how we're actually doing and how.
I'm retiring next week. Didn't you know that?
Scotty. I was like, Michelle, you better not.
I do have to put in a little bit of a plug right now that we actually need a data management system that is going to help us to make this happen. We can stop there, but I'm just going to put that plug in and I'd love to have that conversation.
Actually, with that said, um, is there a data management system off the shelf out there that other districts are using? Other states? I know California is way behind in a lot of this, but I'm just curious.
There is a data management system. We wrote a grant for, um, the Measure K grant, which is a big one we wrote, and the data management system we put in there was Salesforce, Salesforce. Uh, Boys and Girls Club uses it, some other, uh, Life Moves uses it. So I'm not looking at Dr. Baker. I don't know if he wanted me to say that or not.
It's fine, the grant, we, we cut the grant out there.
Uh, well, thank you very much. Thank you to all of you here. Thank you for the presentation. I know that if the presentation took an hour to deliver to us, probably a hundred hours went into put, I don't know, you know, with all of you, I'm sure a few hours here, a few hours there. But I, I know, I know it's, you know, typically at least, at least, you know, double, quadruple time. So anyway, thank you very much. Um, and I think it's important for us to hear and know about, and also for our community to know about. We have a lot of people online and of course, we know that people watch our, um, YouTube and Zoom afterwards. So anyway, I think it's great to get the word out. Um, you know, on the data, it's interesting. Well, actually, let me just, let me just sort of take a step back. So reflecting, um, community schools, I'm so proud of our community schools in Redwood City and I think we do need to just give ourselves a big pat on the back for that. Um, like you said, I think you said twenty-five years. I was trying to figure out about how long we've had them. We are leader in community schools, um, across the state. I know that, um, I have gone to so, like, I was thinking back, like, you know, fifteen, sixteen years ago, I was going to meetings where there was just a few people doing community schools and I was trying to learn from them so I could bring that back to our school district. And then I look at now, like, the state is really promoting it all over, right? Because we have the data, we know how important it is. And we have, we have really grown our program. So, you know, even during the Great Recession, we kept the community schools. We've continued to grow our program. I'm so happy. Eight out of twelve schools. I mean, that's remarkable from where we, I think we, you know, when I started, we had four and we were sort of barely holding on with four, right? And just look at all of you in the room and those of you online and other places that are supporting the program. So, uh, really thrilled with this. It's pretty clear from a lot of the qualitative data that you're gathering through focus groups and others. So I mean, I do think we need to figure out a way, I mean, that is qualitative data. It's not quantitative. Um, but that whole idea of the sense of belonging, um, feeling like you're important, uh, feeling challenged, having those enrichment, enrichments, those after school learning activities. A lot of that is really important. We know that that translates into success in school, right? Um, I know that years ago, we did work with the Gardner Center and we actually, to your point, we tried, you know, there's so many different programs we offer and students, of course, are getting a lot of different things. And it's hard to figure out, well, what is that thing that might be moving them to academic success or, you know, other means of success? I know we did work with them and actually what I remember, one of the things that came out is how important PE was. Um, I don't know if you remember this, John, that when we were looking at the data, it was very interesting that PE and recess actually came out as things that were really important. And so I know that, and, and we didn't have as many things going on back when we did this with the Gardner Center, but, and I know you're working with them. So I guess I would also, in addition to thinking about the data management system with Salesforce, continue that conversation because they have a lot of our data. We've worked with them. I mean, we'd need to pay for that. So again, we have to figure out how we would pay for that. But I, I totally agree with you on this regard that we do need to, you know, and it's not just going to be one program and one adult that, that impacts the child, but we do need to figure out, are there some things that we're doing that are really making a difference versus others? And I know you guys are working on those every day. And some of that, again, you see in a more qualitative kind of, um, subjective way. Is that right? Then, then if we don't have the quantitative data, at least we, we can do that. So, um, I was super excited just some of the new things that you're trying, like the dean of students. I love that idea. And I was reading a little bit in the comments about, um, the dean of students, you know, describing what they were doing and all that. And that just sounds great. And again, I'd love to see the data coming out of that and how that's working. Really appreciate the focus on, um, the academic and extracurriculars, you know, hearing that that's important, the enrichment. Um, and I know it's something that I've advocated for, we've advocated for, we're always trying to figure out how do we find money for? Because it's not necessarily in the ongoing money that we have. And then, uh, I really like that you're doing the, uh, communication and the professional development with the extended day learning. And thank you. Um, it sounds like Gil, you're doing a lot of that and Enrique really appreciate that. Because we know, you know, the kids are in school five or six hours with us and then they've got that extra, what, three to four hours, depending upon the program. And so it is important that we're communicating and translating and all of that. So thank you for, for all that. Um, I just loved, you know, so much of what I heard. I took lots and lots of notes, but I think I'll stop there and just say, uh, thank you and continue to report back to us. And, you know, particularly around as you get more data and figure, and I, and you know, I know it's really hard and that's why I'm always like, okay, what other school districts are doing this? Because it's not an easy thing when you have a student who's being impacted in a lot of different ways to figure out what is, what are those things that are really working for them? So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I love Redwood City School District's commitment to the community schools. I think it's such an important part of what this school district offers, what any school district should be offering. And I think that the transition from like four to eight now really happened in like the last five years, maybe? Not even last.
Four.
Last four years. Yeah. So it's been. Yeah, that, that is, that's, that's remarkable. And I, I think that it's, it's just wonderful to see the impact that that's having. The number of students and families that are able to take advantage of it. Um, I think if we were looking for one data item, I'd actually love to know, how many are we not addressing? Um, what is the need and how much more do we need to go after? Like, are we twenty percent of the way there? Are we eighty percent of the way there? I think that would be something that would be pretty helpful to understand. Um, and that could work across, you know, any individual program or the whole thing as a whole. I do kind of want to ask two bummer questions. Like, can you remind me how long the CCSP grant lasts for?
Five years.
And we're in three?
Ending year one.
Ending year one, okay.
And there's.
Okay, beyond an NYPD. So that's good. Yeah. Let's ask about, let's ask about the yellow P then. Is that one, that one felt, that came out of the pandemic. So is that?
There's no end to it and there's no, what the nice part about it is, and I think that's going to change. There's no reapplication process and there's no attendance requirement.
Okay.
But I have a feeling that's going to change. But I also, Marcella, you also brought up that there might be renewal for the grants, maybe, or you're thinking?
Correct. Um, there's some talk that it's possibly going to have a two-year extension above the five years. Um, so that's a possibility, but again.
We don't know.
We don't know.
Okay. And I'll just repeat that you're saying it's possible that there's a two-year extension, but we don't know yet. Okay. Um, yeah, okay, great. Then that wasn't quite as bummer of an answer as I was expecting. So, but thank you for.
Scared me there for a minute.
But I want these to continue. But, you know, it's nice to know that the funding source is already identified and be able to keep those things going. Um, there are a couple of things that, um, you know, that were neat to see and I'm excited to see the impact that they have, particularly like the focus on the, uh, LPAC, the students taking the LPAC and the collaboration with Costa Ciclo and with, uh, the expansion of it next year. Um, it will be really interesting to see how that, you know, how that cohort works. I still remember back when we looked at the cohort of students doing CAP tutoring and how that was, you know, having positive impact and being able to see that kind of cohort analysis will be great. Um, and then the survey and trends, um, I thought was kind of interesting that on the family side, they don't see the staff and on the staff side, they're not seeing the families. And that'd be really interesting to see how, how that gets addressed, um, you know, in a future report. Uh, because I think that, you know, it's clear that they want to engage, um, and just figuring out what's the, what's in the way for it. But again, I, I agree with Elisa that, um, an hour-long presentation takes a lot more and it's reflective though of, of, of all the work that you're doing. Um, and I think that's the really important thing. So thank you again so much for coming here and presenting tonight. Uh, Dr. Baker, do you have final remarks?
Yeah, I think, Michelle, you and I are the only ones in the room.
Oh, gosh.
That remember the original community schools. We certainly were at one.
I was at TAF.
Yeah, and I didn't get it when I was at Hoover's and I was really kind of upset that I got passed over. Um, but there were reasons. I, I understood that. I was already working with Stanford and so they, uh, allowed someone else, Mary Laron, to have it. And, um, but where it's gone now, it's amazing. It is amazing. It's too bad that Dennis and Maria are not here because they were around when it started. Uh, and, uh, to see it now, with, with the after school programs that are there, the expanded learning, I should say, in the nick of the work that you have done. Gil, what you have done with the professional development, because that's never been done before with our partners after schools, which was really, I thought, a dis- a real disconnect that we were not talking to one another. Um, so kudos to both of you for all that hard work, all the hard work with the community school coordinators. Oh my God. And Marcella, thank you for coming out and helping us when we need the help. I mean, she's there. I, we have questions and you called it, I should not say, you called the state and you don't get a, a, a clear answer. So we go, Marcella, can you help us out with this? And she's, she comes. So thank you so much, even for being here tonight. Thank you. Thank you so much. So I'm really proud of the program, really proud to compare where it was, you know, just when it started back, uh, twenty-five years ago. Um, and to having it at eight sites now, there's really probably maybe one more that should have it. Um, but, but we could talk about that later. We'll talk about that later. They are writing grants. That's the thing. They are writing grants. I mean, what you went through for the Measure K, let's see what happens.
By the way, we did meet with, um, we did meet with, uh, host Slocum and Corso.
Good, good. So we'll see what happens. We'll see what happens with that. But anyway, congratulations to all of you. What a wonderful job.
They are a lot of fun to work with, I'll tell you.
I know. I see you all running back and forth to me and you go, oh my God, what's going in that room now? But, um, anyway, if you can get ahold of Amy, Amy has a lot of the data, the data. And of course, Kristen probably has access to it also.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. And I'll let her know you call her because I'll see her tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, we really tried to get it down to forty minutes, but.
All right, let's move along to, uh, consent items. Um, and we'll do ten point one. It's a single motion to approve all our consent items except for ten point five and ten point six, which we amended the agenda to move to action items. Um, so can I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent items?
So moved?
Seconded.
All in paper.
Aye.
All right, then let's move to eleven point one, approval of the twenty-two-three, twenty-four second interim budget report.
And Rick, you can start.
What happened to the crowd?
The gripping button.
Online. Good evening, everyone, uh, board members and those in the community watching from home. Uh, tonight, we are here to present the twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, second interim financial report. Uh, going through the slides tonight, uh, and also a reminder, this is in coordination with the budget book. It's also in the, uh, board item as well as the, uh, lengthier multi-year projection, uh, that was included with the board item. Uh, right now, uh, this is a familiar slide that we see, uh, at every presentation, uh, just showing the circular nature of school district budgets and where we're at in the, uh, budget year, if you will. And right now highlighted with the, uh, red box is, uh, the second interim report. You know, we had previously just heard about the governor's budget proposal in January as lo- along with, uh, our first interim report at that time, too. We're now eagerly awaiting the May revision, uh, with hopefully all sorts of goodies in there that will benefit our district. Uh, but arguably, if it looks much like the governor's budget proposal, it will not. So, uh, we'll go through that. Uh, we also start, uh, the budget adoption or the budget development process for budget adoption. Uh, I think I heard someone mention earlier that, yeah, after tonight, we then introduce our next out year, uh, when we start talking about budgets. So twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we'll talk about that, um, in a few slides. Uh, then going through budget adoption with the, uh, LCAP, uh, public hearings, uh, along with the budget public hearings, uh, followed by the board adoption, uh, at the last meeting in June at this point. So going through this, uh, ed code forty-two, one thirty says that we must report annually twice, first interim and second interim on the, uh, condition of the district's budget. Uh, the first interim, uh, covers July one through October thirty-first. Uh, the second interim from July one through January thirty-first. Uh, and if we're in a qualified status at second interim, uh, we would have the opportunity to provide a third interim report to the county office of education and the CDE. Good news for us, we are certifying positive tonight. Uh, so once again, telling the ending before the whole story. Uh, but I know at first interim, when we did self-certify as qualified, uh, we did have discussions about what it would take in order to restore our positive certification at second interim. Not to avoid, uh, the third interim report, although not fun. Uh, just a matter of showing where our financial health is with some of the measures that were taken between, I'll say December, uh, and tonight, uh, March twentieth, uh, as we prepared this report. So starting with budget assumptions, uh, these have been updated since, uh, the first interim report with information that we received from the governor's proposed budget. Uh, notably, uh, for twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, the projected COLA for LCFF at less than one percent. Uh, right now at point seven-six, uh, there is speculation that that may change slightly, but it shouldn't go significantly up or significantly down when the May revision comes out from, uh, the information we're receiving. Uh, you can see that the, uh, CalSTRS employer rate, uh, remains static at nineteen point one zero percent. Uh, in order for that to change that as legislative action, uh, unlike CalPERS, where CalPERS gets to set their rates annually, uh, you can see that that is continuing to increase, uh, up to twenty-eight and a half percent through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, of note, you know, it wasn't but ten or eleven years ago when that rate was right around eleven percent. So to put that in perspective, uh, we're nearing or approaching twenty percent increase in our employer rate for, uh, our employees that are part of the CalPERS retirement system. Uh, step and column, uh, remains the same. Property tax increase and the consumer price index has been updated. Uh, all of these assumptions will be evaluated, uh, after second interim again, uh, along with, uh, what comes from the governor's May revision will be taken into account as we go through this process. Uh, the next couple of slides, uh, are focusing on revenue and expenditures, uh, for the first interim report. For the presentation, we highlight only fund one, uh, is our general fund or the fund that pays for the majority of everything that we do in a school district. Uh, so you can see on here, uh, that we are showing an increase, uh, in revenues since, uh, certainly since budget adoption, uh, and even first interim. Most of the LCFF revenue increases, uh, were because of the low projected COLA, which does not necessarily make sense, um, in some ways. Uh, but because of the lower COLA, the money that we anticipated with our in lieu taxes being transferred to our independent charter schools has actually been reduced with that lower COLA. We are also able to, uh, look at all of our independent charters, first interim reports, uh, and bring in their P-one or period one attendance, uh, and their current enrollment versus what they projected back in June. On this slide, this is simply breaking down, uh, the percentage of each revenue source uh, and what that means to the district in terms of dollars, uh, along with percentage. Uh, this is a graphical representation of the previous slide showing that, uh, between the LCFF base and our supplemental concentration, that is roughly about sixty-five percent of our annual revenue. Going into expenditures, uh, you can see that we did have some reductions in expenditures, uh, from our first interim report. And we'll talk about that in a little more detail in a couple of slides. Uh, but really this was a, a combination of factors, including looking for current year savings, uh, as well as the actions the board took, uh, at the first meeting in March, uh, with reduction of services, uh, primarily geared around one-time funds, uh, from COVID that are either expiring or fully, uh, expended at this point in time. So you can see on here the difference of about nine point four million dollars, uh, in expenditures. Through this slide, uh, is a percentage breakdown of, uh, each of these categories, uh, and the amount, uh, of expenditure they represent in our budget. So here, this slide has been modified slightly since. So here, this slide has been modified slightly since the one in the board packet, showing the graphical representation of the expenditures for Fund 01. And then color coded, although one of them is slightly off color from the graph, shows the types of positions and services that are generally funded by these buckets. So for example, in certificate salaries, that includes classroom teachers, TOSSAs, counselors, psychologists, site administrators and district office administrators. And if we look at diagnosed services and operating differences, that includes utilities, network, internet, insurance, professional services, contracted personnel, and outside services that we pay for on an annual basis that contribute to make this up. I would note that these lists are not exhaustive, but just snippets for people that may not understand what fall into some of these buckets out in the general public. You can see on the bottom left corner, the certificate, classified, and the benefits represent about 74% of our expenditures in our budget. On here is the ending fund balance for Fund 01. The section follows our revenues and expenditures. Of note on here, you can see that our transfers in, those are transfers in from Fund 25, our RDA funds was reduced by $5 million. So at first interim, and there's another slide on this, we were expecting to transfer in $14.3 million for this school year. And through the work that was done by staff cabinet and the board, we've been able to reduce that to 9.3 estimated at this point for 23-24. Going into the next couple of slides, I left in the first interim multi-year projection just as a reference point as we go through the next couple of slides. And really what I wanted to highlight on here isn't the revenues or necessarily the individual expenditures on here. But just to show that at first interim report and one of the reasons or the reason why that we self-certified as qualified was because of the fiscal stabilization plan measures of a reduction of $5 million and $6.5 million respectively in our two out years. The reason that we were self-certified as qualified is because not all of those expenditure reductions had been identified at that point. So going through, we were still showing that with those reductions, we were able to meet our minimum economic reserve. And so it was really just the work of doing what we could to minimize or eliminate those as much as possible. So this is simply a highlight out of each multi-year, one from first interim and one from second interim. The top one showing again the need for $5 million and $6.5 million in reductions. The second one showing what we are submitting tonight for approval, a fiscal stabilization plan that requires no additional reductions as we sit here tonight in either 24, 25, or 25, 26. The reasons for this reduction, you know, really hover around the five things that are in this bullet. They have been reordered from the presentation, but they're the same five items that were in there, really showing what impacted those numbers the most. And it's from the staff, along with HR and Wendy, Dr. Baker, Ana Herrera. We went through this with all of our staffs as well and looked at current year positions that are unfilled or were unfilled for the majority of the year. We talked about the likelihood of those being filled before the end of the year and some estimated savings that we could receive from those positions. We also were working and we're still continuing to work that we don't have double budgeted positions where a position remained open that still has an encumbered budget. And then we have contract services coming in. So we're paying it in two different places, so to speak, in terms of incomers to the budget. So we were able to clean up some of those as well that were essentially being counted twice in the budget at first interim. The elimination, it's a March 6 meeting of one-time funded positions. That doesn't necessarily mean that's a layoff for everybody. There are other open positions that some of those people will move into during the course of this time period. And then we did have some reductions of services based on particular kinds of services that were either no longer needed or lack of funding for those positions moving forward. The two small things, but they did make a sizable difference was the governor's proposed budget COLA and the impact that it had to the property taxes that we pass on to our charter schools, as well as the charter school ADA that I mentioned earlier. So now looking at the short version, if you will, the multi-year projection for the second interim, you can see the updated revenues and expenditures from the first several slides in the budget book, as well as the zeros highlighted in green on the fiscal stabilization plan measures. I think it's important to note that although we have zero on these two lines, this doesn't mean our work is done and that we don't have to worry about this in the future. As we've discussed at previous meetings and last meeting and several other meetings, we're still using some one-time funds as a result that came from either the state or federal government that are carrying some program services and positions through next year. But those funds will be fully expended at that time period. So we'll be having some conversations, but not the same ones, right? We'll have to determine what program services are still warranted and where those fit into our budget moving forward and then takes the appropriate measures to make that happen. So that work will start as we start budget development through the summer and in the late, late summer and early fall. So with the second interim, with those reductions, we are meeting our minimum reserve for economic uncertainty. Thus, our ability to self-certify is positive for the 23-24 second interim. Also by doing so, as mentioned, we will not have to do a third interim report this school year. Other balances, this is other balances of our other funds. There's only one that I'd like to talk about with the asterisk, and that's capital facilities. As we were preparing the budget documents, we normally prepare the funds first because they tend to be a little bit easier to get through and check those off. And then we work on Fund One and the multi-year projection for that. In Fund One that was submitted to the county, we did make the adjustment to the Fund 25 and the RDA transfers in. Unfortunately, we did not make that on the Fund 25 sheet. So we had to go back in and modify that and increase that an additional $5 million from what was in the original budget book last week. So as we move forward, we're still continuing to monitor. And as I mentioned, the May revision, which will be out sometime around May 10th to 15th, still looking at state and national economy, I'll even say local economy as we go in and we relook at what we're projecting for property taxes in the out year, the out year and eventually the new triple out year that'll come up pretty quickly. Still, our staffing issues that we continue to have and some hard to fill positions that contribute to some of the issues that we were trying to correct with contracted services versus hiring our own employees or having vacancies and making sure that we're in alignment and not double counting. We have employee negotiations that we're currently in with our CTA, and we're starting our CSA negotiations later this week. And then, of course, our enrollment, our impact on school sizes and classroom sizes throughout the district. As we go forward, tonight in March is our second interim budget report, the May revision, and then the LCAP and budget public hearing, followed by the budget adoption. So I know that did not take an hour, but it took us felt like hundreds of hours to complete, but I'll hand it back over to the board for any questions or comments.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Thanks for putting together the presentation into your office for all the work that went into getting the interim report ready for us. And also taking the time, I think you met probably, you've answered our questions over the, over the course of the weekend. Would anybody like to start with questions, comments, or clarifications?
Well, it wasn't an hour-long presentation, but it is a 188-page PDF. It's behind it. So definitely appreciate all the, the hard work that goes into making this happen. It's wonderful news that there's not going to be a third interim. And while it sounds like there, there may be some cuts forthcoming next year as some of the one-time funds expire, we no longer have a mystery item of where are we going to find $6.5 million? So that's a relief. So bravo on that. In terms of the magnitude of the expiring funds that are, that are going to expire next year, just do we, do we have a sense of order of magnitude just so we can start working with the community and communicating about like the, the size of, of cuts that will?
One thing that I'm quite concerned about, and we've spoken about it, is, you know, we have our mental health clinicians. It's about $2.4 million. So as I was at superintendent's advisory the other night, I said, we're writing a grant for 750K. We have 500K that's coming in. That's not enough. Not enough. And as it is that if we get those grant dollars, it's going to help with the money that we're spending right now for those positions. So that is a concern, and I've not only mentioned it in our small executive cabinet, but also to principals. So people know that, you know, it's, it's out there. Ana Paola and also Michelle is involved in looking at these grants. The one that is for 750K is due in four weeks from the feds. So we are on top of it to see if we qualify and can move forward. There are some other dollars that are also out there for mental health from different other agencies. And so we're looking at them too. But I hoping that we get a sizable amount. So maybe we don't have to go through that part again, especially with more mental health people than our clinicians than we did this past year, because I know the money is running out. That's my biggest fear. And then you're talking about MTSS coaches. And then you're talking reading specialists, the reading intervention people. And there's not much, not much out there for reading intervention. I'm surprised. I'm really surprised while looking at the state bed grant.
I, I think it's good that we're really clear with the community about like, here's the current status of things. Here's what we're trying to do about it, you know, so that it's not a scramble at the end. And yeah, so thanks. In terms of the, the bond money that's there in Measure S, like, do we have any thoughts around when we can start the ball moving on that and start deploying?
Yeah, we're working on that. And Dr. Baker and I have spoken. We'll bring an update back to the board when we bring our architect pool for approval.
And there's, and isn't the, I can't remember this name, Dan Cal.
Yeah.
They will be presenting, isn't it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night at the CBOC.
Yeah.
Cool. Awesome. Cool. That's all I got.
I don't have any questions. This is like, what, my third presentation? Part of the budget committee and then the superintendent advisory. So yes. Thank you and your team. So, so again, thank you and the team of business services for all the help.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. I mean, it's pretty clear how much work goes into the budget on a regular basis and then just preparing the reports. And we had an opportunity to talk earlier this week, so I got questions answered. And yeah, I think the important thing is, you know, right now, we sort of, you know, we're qualitative, we're qualified, right? Is that right? The right term? Positive qualification.
Positive qualification.
Thank you. Positive qualification. I have to go back to the slide and look. So that's important. And I, I do agree with, with David that, you know, we just need to be clear with the community. I mean, we, here, here's the deal. The board, we've been talking and district staff, we've been talking about this for years. We knew as the money was coming in, it was great news. We've been using the money as it was designed for students. We've, you know, the parents loudly spoke. Staff has loudly spoken about how important these things are that were funded by a lot. I mean, a lot of it was the stimulus money from the pandemic. It was also some other grants and things like that. So, you know, in addition to talking about it, the board meeting, we, you know, I know we've talked about it and you're thinking about like, how do we continue to have those conversations in a broader way and get input? Because it was clear, even though we've been talking about it, it was pretty clear that it was a surprise to our community. And so we need to be prepared for that. And, you know, mental health clinicians, we've been talking about that again for years, and we know it's important. I will say I'm going to a CSBA board meeting this weekend. So I will talk to our legislative advocates about this, and I'm sure I'll hear from other regions. But I know that a lot of people have used this money for mental health. So I'll be curious to hear, maybe there's an opportunity for CSBA and AXA and CASBO and others to advocate. Once again, it's kind of crazy that it's a mental health sort of, you know, it's a social emotional thing, and yet we're educators, but it always goes to the schools to provide it. And it's important to provide it, but maybe there's an opportunity to seek out some additional funding, either from the state or the feds around this. You know, we used to have county support, but then that went away. Yeah. Because the county's budget, I mean, it's primarily healthcare kinds of, I mean, if you look at their overall program.
Well, recently, Santa Clara County, and I caught the tail end of the news article on Tuesday. Yeah, Tuesday was the night I was home. And I forget what school district, and I have to go back and look, but they are providing a wellness center at that, in that district at each of their schools. And it's being paid by Santa Clara County. So it provides them with mental health caseworkers and so forth. I've got to go back and see if I can find that source on, on ABC Channel 7 and look at it again, see what school district and how did that come about?
Should we, should we be leaning a little bit harder?
Anyway, yeah, so it's good that we're talking about it and, you know, we'll have to figure out how we communicate that out to the community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rick, and your office, you know, and, and actually the whole, the whole government, the whole cabinet for the, the work for pushing forward on the stabilization effort to get a positive certification here. You know, I know it wasn't easy, both technically just getting the numbers to work out right, but also, you know, the execution of, of evaluating how we were going to be able to reduce where we needed to. So I appreciate that work. I, you know, I looked at, looking at the Fund 25 transfer in, you know, for years back, it's always been there and it always goes down, but I've never seen it be so high in the budget, you know? It usually starts at like maybe 2 million and then will get reduced down to zero. And seeing it starting at like 14 says that, yeah, clearly there's still some buffeting that has to happen into the budget there. So I know that as we start, yeah, with the next, the new out years, it might be a different picture that we're looking at. So we'll, we'll have to see what it is, but I agree that figuring out like how we separate what is one-time funding from this is, you know, the budget funding, how we're clear about that communication, what we're going after for grants, and then contextualizing it with, you know, how any changes to a program at any specific site affects that site. Because they're often having additional support for that same kind of program through other funding. And when we talk about it in just isolation of, you know, okay, so we're cutting the, you know, LCFF funding, but the county's still putting money in and we'll have another grant there. It's, it's hard to understand that whole thing. So we'll have to pull that into the conversation. Anyways, but thanks again. So did you have any comments?
I know your department's been absent people. So thank you, Rick, for doing all the work. You're not only your department, but yourself, because they were here on weekends and late nights to make sure that this is going to get done. And now we go on to negotiations. And so that's still another thing that we have to consider because when we start developing this process, whatever this process is going to be, which we'll probably, we'll, we'll talk about in a future meeting and have a, a day where we're just going to focus on that. We have to consider that also. So that comes from somewhere, right? Comes from some bucket. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, it's important for, I mean, I think we all know this, but it's important for the audience who might be interested in the budget. Right now, we do not have any increases. Well, we have step and column increases we have in there, but we wouldn't have any additional increases that are negotiated. All, yeah, salaries and benefits in there for future years. So as you add those in, which we know we want to do, then we also need to look at what are other areas that we need to cut back on. So this is just, this is a constant cycle, right? Anyway, much appreciated.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our next action item, which is 10.5.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our next action item, which is ten-point-five. Uh the vote on it. Yes, you're right. Rookie mistake, rookie mistake. So can I get a motion to approve the second interim?
I'll move to approve the second interim budget.
All second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Bravo.
Great. And with that motion approved, now we're moving on to the next action item of uh ten-point-five, uh which is the approval of the E-rate bid process for the Redwood City School District uh WAN service. Do you want to cover that?
So what we can do, Rick, we had a, a question from Cecilia earlier today, and so this is to, to make you aware of her question, and then also to um talk about the response. So Cecilia, you could, you could either give the question that you presented to us earlier, and then we'll respond to it.
I could try to say what I asked, but let me look for the actual email so that I don't miss anything. The, the first thing is I noticed like the title didn't match the recommendation. So it said, the title was um or is to here you go, let me read it. Approval of E-rate bid process, but the recommendation is to approve a three-year contract. And so I just wanted to be clear, and so because it was after the seventy-two hours, the change couldn't be made. I mean, you guys could probably explain it, because that's the one thing that I was trying to understand, and so that is the reason why um I talked to Dr. Baker and Aaron. Um and so, and then, let's see, what else?
Do you want Rick to go through the response?
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, I can, I can do, I think I remember. That's unique, that's something very soon.
Yeah.
So uh yeah, uh thank you, Cecilia, for bringing this up. The uh at minimum uh in uh item, and I'm talking about both of them interchangeably right now, in ten-point-six or ten-point-five, excuse me, process at minimum should have been removed. It should just been approval of the E-rate bid and subsequent contract for three years of service. Uh we acknowledge that. Uh the second one, uh we did remove the word process, but we could have been clear on that. So I'm saying uh on both of those titles, it could have been clear. Uh also, we did add uh the total for the three-year contracts of each one, we had it on an annual basis, but we also added the total contract price uh for those three. Uh important to note that the I might have them backwards. Let me just make sure. Yeah, so the bundled internet access uh is a three-year contract per E-rate requirement. Uh we do have the ability to extend for two-one-year options on that for a maximum length of an E-rate contract of five years. Uh on the uh one for WAN service, it is a three-year contract. Uh we have the ability, or it automatically turns the month to month if another contract is not uh uh bid and negotiated prior to the expiration of that date. Uh there was other, some other issues with the word E-rate uh on the board cover that was prepared by Infinity Communications and that district staff. Uh they used R-rate, E-rate, little E, big rate, uh E-dash rate. Uh we tried to clean those up on the board cover, at least when we brought in some of their language. Uh we did miss two for um one on each uh with just E-rate rather than E-dash, capital R-rate. Uh but otherwise, fifteen-point-five is for the approval of a three-year contract for district-wide wide-area network services. Uh ten-point-six uh is the E-rate uh approval of the E-rate bid uh for internet access. Uh one of the questions was because of the location was listed uh at Hoover, that is just our uh point of entry and exit of internet services. Uh the LAN links connect all services through that one internet um connection.
So that's why it said Hoover. That's why it says Hoover, when, when actually it's for
For all.
All.
And that was my confusion, because in one item you see the Hoover address, and then on the WAN, you see all of them. So that was, you know, again, that was another. Yeah. So thank you.
Great questions. Does anyone else have questions, comments that they want to um bring up while we have a chance to discuss these items? Nope. Can I have a motion to approve ten-point-five?
I will make a motion to approve ten-five.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. And similarly, since we just discussed ten-point-six, I'll make sure that nobody had comments or questions about ten-point-six specifically. We covered it all in a previous conversation. Great. Then can I have a motion to approve ten-point-six?
I'll make a motion to approve ten-point-six.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that finishes up the action items. Uh and we get to move on to board and student uh board and superintendent reports.
I'll go first, and I'll repeat again just for, for this purpose, um for, for this item. Uh I attend a superintendent advisory committee, and Rick gave the report on the budget. Um and then I met on my one-on-one, and so part of the budget, he came in and so explained that um slide again. And that's it. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'm Rick. There's a bunch of different stuff. I met with a number of members of the community um about ongoing budget items uh responsive to the last meeting, uh also had a number of different discussions about the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year and beyond at Orion, and what that's going to look like with two growing programs, and what are different options are there? And yeah, let's see, um had a meeting with the dental board. I did I report on that last time? I'm forgetting, but I, I, that, that, that meeting did indeed happen. Um we're still waiting to hear back more concrete recommendations for the district, uh but there's a second meeting that's, it's going to follow from that. And then there was the LCAP advisory meeting on the eleventh. Yep. And then a meeting about the budget. Yeah, okay. So I think that's pretty much it for me. Sorry.
I don't have anything to report.
Yeah, I was at the LCAP meeting as well. Um just so everyone knows, it was presentation about what the LCAP is, and then there were breakout rooms looking at the different goals and how they went last year. Um there's a couple more coming, and then LCAP comes to the board in June. Um and then there was the Measure U Parcel Tax Committee meeting. Um they reviewed and approved the Year Six Measure U Committee Report. I'm sure we'll see that in a future meeting. Um they, and passed a resolution uh saying that the revenue was expended in the manner appropriate with the ballot measure, so that was good. Um and then they elected a new chair, um Stephanie Gibson. So congratulations, Stephanie, uh and thank you for taking on the role of the chair. Um and, you know, and obviously thanks to Janet Borgans, who uh turned out, but was a great chair, but proud of that.
Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Measure U Committee, and uh some work with, you know, um Garf, uh Garfield over the weekend, you know.
Great. Um so next step is correspondence.
Well, we've all gotten a lot of emails about uh the budget and budget cuts and questions about the budget.
Yeah, I got an email about that I was going to report here, uh that actually Janet and I both got it, um but our speaker came and spoke in oral, oral you know, oral communication, and that was basically the email was covered from Chris. So um yeah, otherwise it was budget cuts, um some staff discussing SLC caseloads as part of, you know, things like that. Anyone else?
Had some correspondence with a vendor, uh Du Chinese, about uh Mandarin immersion uh online reading programs and the like. Um no concrete recommendations from that, but there's just a, a conversation I had. Um and then a bunch of correspondence, like I mentioned, about uh Orion twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond.
Okay, then I think we can move on to other business and suggested items for future agenda.
Let's think on the, on the Orion front. I, I think at some point we're going to need to agendize an item to review kind of the, the game plan of what, what we want to do there as, as we have two growing uh programs at that campus, so.
Right, and I'd like to put that on a, and, and it can be done off-site, where if people are willing, they can come to that. But also we're going to need an off-site to, for several things. Number one, we know that um for twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll have the budget in place. I'm concerned about twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven. So I want that discussion and what that's going to look like moving it forward when we come back in the fall. Number two is also, so the other piece will be talking about the Orion, and then also talking about um the charter schools plus the other leases that are coming up. Yeah, that all plays into, all plays into it. So we need to have uh that discussion. So I would like to have like maybe a half a day, maybe a little more than a half a day, because it probably will take us longer to get through some of these items and to get your input. The other piece that we want to look at is data and how data is presented. And want to get each of your thoughts, because I'm getting several different pieces, but we can't do it all. So I want to narrow it, narrow the scope, and so that we go in that direction. And we're also looking at some of our assessments at this point in time, which I'd like Anna to share with you and what our thoughts are, where we may be going next. So I know I'm not, I, I'm hoping that sometime, excuse me, in maybe early to mid-May, we could do this, and then bring it to an open board meeting. Not that that won't be open, it will be open, but where we really advertise it, and people come out and see what we're actually planning, especially for the budget, especially if we're going down the road of looking at leases, looking at um Orion, and then also looking at how we're going to start presenting data. If it's going to be in the same manner, is it going to be different? But I need to get a consensus, because we're kind of moving in various directions.
Yeah, so in addition, I think all, all that sounds great. I would say in addition to not just focusing on Orion, but also I think it's important for us to look at every school site and the populations at those. I mean, I mean, I know I've gotten in the past, as an example, emails from parents who are not able to get into Kennedy Middle School because those classes were impacted. So I think it would behoove us to, to really look at every school and the enrollment, what's the capacity at that school site for the classrooms? I mean, we're, we're also, I know we're gathering a lot of that data now, because it's also part of the bond um program, but I think, you know, the timing is actually really good for that, because we're getting input from school sites. Um input from the con, the construction manager, we know the program needs, um and, you know, it's all kind of a package in terms of what we might want to do to make sure that our programs are able to grow at the school sites. And then where we have room, there's an opportunity to rethink what we're doing there, right?
And, and Olivia's been very good about giving us each month what the attendance is and what it looks like in each classroom. So that's
That would be great for us to see. Yeah.
I think you have it. You, didn't she give it to all the board members, if I'm not mistaken? I thought all
Recently?
No, no, it, it's a folder, and each month there's something put into the folder.
Oh, I might need a reminder of the link for the folder.
We're in seven, month seven, and so I'm looking, I'm looking.
Oh, that's great, because I, we got it. We got it that for the ten days, and maybe it's still in that there, but I, yeah, if you could just have her send it again.
Yeah, yeah, because you, all the schools, it has all the classrooms.
But anyway, I think it's great to, to think about Orion, but in the context of, you know, everything else, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure she gets that out again. I know. I thought she said, I thought when she sent it, she sent it to all of us with the folder, and then each month she just puts stuff in the folder. Yeah, okay. Good. So um we can, we can, I would wait till Janet comes, so that we can look at calendars for that, you know, early May or mid-May. Since she's, she's not here tonight, but that's one thing that I think we really need to do.
All right, sounds good. Um and then are there any, the fifteen-point-one, are there any changes to the board meeting's calendar?
No changes.
Okay. Then I know we're going to be reconvening back to closed session, but we still adjourn, right? Okay, we're going to adjourn the closed session, and then just like we opened the session, I'd like to uh adjourn the session in memory of uh Principal Lupe Torres-Calio. Um we miss her, and we appreciate all the work that she did in Redwood City. Uh can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm still moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.